I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Great, thank you very much. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, second?
I'll second it.
Can second that?
Second by all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. I don't see any general public with us. If there's anyone here that's not a member of the board, or the Quarry Valley staff and you wish to speak, this would be your opportunity to do so. Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Is there any old business to come before the board? New business. The first order before the board is the H48, the non-comingle of ballots for the March 2nd, 2021 election. So, Chris, did you want to explain that a little bit? This is an issue that will need to have a motion on.
Right, and so Betsy actually was going to join us, but I don't see her on the call. But, so this is Betsy Westcott's request, that I guess this year they are, and you also have the handout from the, you know, I never get it right, but the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. And I think it's number seven, where if pursuant to its articles of agreement, a union school district or unified union school district is required to compile the ballots cast by voters in member towns. Before counting the results, the legislative body may vote that the ballots for the 2020 annual meeting are not required to be compiled before counting. In such case, the ballots may be counted by each member town, and the results reported to the school district clerk for determination of the official district-wide results. So what Betsy is asking for us to do this year for the board to give approval is that each town will count their ballots, and then will report to Betsy, as opposed to driving the ballots over and then counting them at Polton.
Are there any questions from anyone? If you recall, when we voted to join and form Quarry Valley, one of the tenants was that we would co-mingle ballots because we did not want, if one town, let's say, shouldn't pass the budget and another one should, that because we are operating as one, that we would count our ballots as one. Of course, this year is a unique year, and just in terms of safety and not having individuals move from one community to the next, it would only be for this one year. Next year, if we're in a different place, hopefully, we would go back to the original tenants of the agreements and co-mingle ballots. So are there any questions, concerns? We would need to have a motion on this to non-co-mingle of the ballots for the March 2nd, 2021 election only.
Kristen Roth, so moved.
Second?
I will second that.
Second by Nate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Jim Mumford, did you just join us?
I did, hello everybody.
Hi Jim.
Picture, thank you. The next piece of new business, there are a couple proposals on here, and you received those in your packet, but I'm going to just let Chris speak to those, and then we can discuss them after.
Alright, thank you. So the Margolis Healy proposal, this is something we discussed. There were some concerns moved forward with school security. There are some things that might be happening in the future, which just would require us to revisit our emergency operation plans, as well as the safety of our facilities, as well as our students and our staff. And so, I reached out to Brooke Farrell Olsen over at Slate Valley. I know that they work closely with Margolis Healy, which is a well-respected firm nationwide. They specialize in school security and campus security, things along those lines. I had a good conversation with Rob Evans, who is the Vermont Director of this. And so, he had actually put together a proposal for us, where they would come in and do a security audit of our five schools, take a look at. And I know if you look, you know, the proposal, there are those three tiers. You know, one is obviously look at the documentation, just make sure that, you know, we have all our ducks in a row, that we are doing the proper training with our staff and with our students. We are, so that's the first circle, yes, the policies, procedures, practices. The second circle, as they discuss, is the physical security systems, where they just revisit and look at, obviously, our, you know, from our access control systems to security cameras, just, you know, just, you know, all those things along those lines. And the third one is just the response capacity, that if there was a a situation in one of our schools, you know, are we well-equipped to handle that? In terms of what is the response time, and what does that look like? So they would provide us feedback along, you know, each of these areas. And then the, where Slate Valley has also moved to is a retainer. So they have Margolis Healy on a retainer for the one year, and that's just a, you know, just provide services, back if there is a situation where we need assistance with implementation, or programming, or say with a plan, or just, you know, any sort of thing, that they're there. So we'll not be on a per fee, or per incident basis in terms of being charged. So, we have it at our disposal. So, I know there's a lot in there, I know it's pretty costly, but I know that just kind of projecting forward, that's, you know, we work in New Jersey and Illinois, where school safety is paramount. I think it's one where, I think it'd be wise for us to take a look at, and really just make sure that we, in all five of our schools, have things buttoned up, and we're doing everything we can to ensure the safety of our, both of our students and our staff.
And if I can just jump in here, Kristen and I have been in some conferences with them the last, over the last few years, with through the, with Rob Evans and through the Vermont Safety Thing, and they're very thorough.
And they also do hold community forums. We had some parent forums back a few years ago as well. So, they really are very, very good to work with.
Seth, you look like you have a question. No? You're muted. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments on the proposal that's in front of you?
I just realized that was on me. No, no questions. I appreciate the point that they're also working with the Agency of Education and Public Safety in Vermont as well, so that's, you know, consistent.
Okay.
This is Kristen Roth, I just have a question. It's kind of a different topic, but I just want to throw it out there, that just because being talked about in the legislature, that, you know, kind of, I don't think it'll go anywhere as a bill, but there's a bill to propose getting rid of SROs statewide, that schools will not be able to have them. So, if they have any evaluation on whether SROs are, you know, cost and benefits of having those, paid by or contracted with local school districts, that's something that would be, I don't know if they do that kind of research, or if they're more, you know, it looks like it's more.
I think it's more building-based, believe it or not.
Yeah.
I will let you know that you always see the school board letter, and it did come out about the SRO. I contacted Chris at like 11 o'clock at night, and by 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, he had a letter ready to go out to all our legislatures. So, we have sent a letter from each Quarry Valley, Rutland Town, and Wells Springs, as well as the GRCSU, supporting keeping the option local to employ SROs. If you read the bill, I mean, the data was, first of all, rather old. And secondly, it really didn't pertain to rural schools such as ours. There were some real anomalies in there that didn't really pertain to our schools. So, we did send a letter, and saying that, that it should be at the local level. It's our option to employ. So, we'll see what happens there. But we have been proactive on that measure. And we've also talked about here, yeah, go ahead.
No, I'm just gonna add one thing. I know that when we talk about the circles, the response capacity. So Kristen, there would be a discussion with regard to, if there, like I said, if there were an incident, you know, what sort of response would we have? I know that it's always a concern. You know, I mean, like I said, I've worked in inner-city schools, I've worked in rural schools, and I think that is a concern if you're in more of a rural location. If there was an incident, that if you have a county sheriff's department or state police, and the response time is 20, 25 minutes, you know, is that really suitable for an emergency incident? And so therefore, they may recommend, like I said, campus security or school resource officer to assist in a response plan. So I think that would be part of that, that overall discussion. So they really do take a look at every detail of, you know, they vet out every detail. If you had an incident, what that would look like, and where the holes are, and what we could do to patch those things up, to make sure that we really are on a day-to-day basis, you know, making sure everyone's safe.
Okay, that's great. I just heard of this today, and I was kind of concerned that local towns and districts aren't going to be able to make their own decisions about what's needed. And, you know, and then, so that was one of my own personal thought, but then just remembering back some of our, like, budget time conversations about sort of looking at those kind of expenses going forward, you know, just the, looking at that, you know, cost benefit analysis, that's all. So, I just wanted to see if that would be part of what they could or should do.
And I think the other piece we've talked about with the SRO, and this is certainly something we can discuss down under G for committees, but we have discussed, you know, expanding the role of the SRO when they're in our buildings, to, you know, have them be a little more interactive, and, you know, maybe do a program or something on something relevant, depending on the building they're in. And so, you know, I think that's something, when we reorganize in March, that that would be a good idea to have a committee that maybe addresses that. So that, when we talk about the SRO, that we are using them to the fullest capacity, and for the best benefit for our students and for our communities. But moving back to the proposal in front of you, are there any objections to the proposal? Or would there be a motion to move forward with this?
I make a motion to move forward.
Seth will second that motion.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections? Alright, motion passes unanimously. The next is also a facility proposal that we have discussed. And this is something that Louis, I believe, right, put together, contacted. And I don't see that Louis has joined us this evening.
So Louis, he said he's at his son's ba-, or he's watching his son's basketball game right now, so.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm doing dual duty here, trying to watch and do. But, understandable. So this is something else we had discussed, the facility proposal. And I'm hoping everybody had an opportunity to kind of read over that. Was there anything, Chris, maybe you wanted to add? Or are there any questions perhaps board members have that could direct the conversation?
The only thing I would add is, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I know Louis reached out to Visbit, and this was the organization that they recommended. So it's, they're pretty reputable. They do a very thorough job, and would provide us with all the information that we need moving forward, so.
What information?
Regarding just facilities, maintenance repairs, putting together a plan, just, you know, really looking at just, you know, breaking down the details in terms of where, where the cost might be. There might be some hidden costs, and so they really help us evaluate, building just based upon age, just like, you know, the, look at the maintenance history, they look at the, it's the life of a certain, you know, major system, or like I say, a furnace or a boiler, and they really kind of break down what the projected cost might be.
And how much are their, the cost, the cost?
The total cost in the proposal, I do believe, was, for all five schools, $19,900.
And so Jim, that's, it does have a breakdown per school.
I didn't see it, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I'll give you the, the quick lowdown. Basically, Polton Elementary, Proctor Elementary, that was 3,200 each, and 4,500 each for Polton Elementary, Proctor High, and West Rutland School.
And I think we kind of talked about this during budgeting. The hope is that having, kind of going through this, where I'm currently employed, and they break it down, what we're doing is to like a five-year, three-year, two-year, what you need to do this year, which helps with budgeting. The other piece, I think, that would be helpful for us, since we have so many buildings, is if we have multiple projects, allowing us to look at, is it smart that in three years, we're going to bond, because we're going to do, you know, X amount of projects at one time across all buildings, or three buildings, or whatever that is? Rather than kind of, while we have great staff in our buildings, I think sometimes having an outside eye come in and look at that, and analyze things that, just like, you know, when you walk in your house every day, you don't always see everything, but somebody else comes in and sees something entirely different. So it just gives us kind of a new perspective, and the fact that they would tear it out for us, I think would be helpful for budgeting also. Are there any other questions?
I'm gonna make a motion to support the proposal.
I'm gonna support your motion again.
Alright, motion by Jim, seconded by Seth. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, I apologize, sometimes. As you know, we will reorganize next month, and in preparation to do that, I thought it might be a good idea for members to start thinking about committees to which they would like to be assigned to. And particularly, having just passed these two proposals, well definitely, I think it would be advantageous to have the facilities committee that kind of, we had last year, but really didn't go that much further. The other committee, I thought perhaps we would like to think about, would be the SRO, as well as, and I'm not sure what we'd like to call this, I'm calling it course study, for lack of a better term. But looking at middle school and high school, we've kind of talked about this, and looking across all three schools, about what we have available, and what we are duplicating, so that we can offer additional elective for our students, and as well as some upper-level courses by sharing instructors, like we're doing currently with West Rutland to Proctor. This has been a great, I don't know if we want to call it a pilot project. It's so much smoother, I hate to term it kind of like that. But, but being able to do that, but in order to take that next step, I think we have to have a good idea of what is out there, so we can make those kinds of decisions. I think that the committee, a committee like that, would be also working with the admin team, and, you know, listening to them and getting ideas. So, those are just some suggestions, and I think it's always good for people to think about. So when we come back to parts, and we kind of have this list of things that people want to raise their hands to sign up for committees. And that is that. The second piece, budget signs. I just wondered if you thought this year, since it's kind of an odd year, and who knows, we may get more people having our annual meeting this way than we do when we meet in person. We never really garner many people at in-person meetings. But, do we want to purchase a couple signs for each voting place that says "Support Quarry Valley Budget"? Is that something the board's interested in? No? Okay. Okay.
That's just me.
Okay. Alright, that's fine, it was just a suggestion. Alright. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of January 18th. A motion would be in order to approve those minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion by Jim, second?
I will second.
Second by Seth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Approval of warrants, you had the warrants in your packet. Questions to warrants should be sent to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Nate? Second? Second by Tom? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report, Chris?
Thanks Lisa. I have a few items to kind of go over. So the past couple weeks, we've been working on getting everything prepared for the town meeting and budget votes. The Quarry Valley Unified Union School District's information meeting is scheduled for February 23rd at 7:00 PM. The link for this will be on, you know, in the annual reports, on the warning, it'll be on our website, the brochure, we have it also in the PEG TV budget presentation. But if anyone can't find it in any of those places, and still needs it, they can always reach out to myself, or Building Principals, you know, Wendy Bixby, we'll be more than happy to provide that for anyone. The annual reports and brochures haven't, are finalized, they are at printers. We should have them by, they're set on the 17th. We are working on getting the, both the reports and brochures, and the PEG TV presentation on the GRCSU website. I checked about an hour ago, still not on there. So I just need to check with our website designer to see what the holdup is, but we'll have those up there within the day, next day or two. As I said before, the budget presentation, we finalized, it was a little bit tougher this year than it was last year, where we, you know, didn't go to PEG TV, we didn't sit in the studio. I know that some of our building principals were upset about that, they liked that 52 minutes of fame. But we had, we kind of just shifted a little bit, and we relied on our instructional coaches. We used a technique that some of our teachers use, Screencast, but, so we asked each of the building administrators, myself, Louis, to individually record our presentations, and then we were able to kind of stitch them together. And so we have set that off to PEG TV, but we will have a link to that presentation on our website as well, so, and hopefully on our school websites, in addition to that. So, it's, it's pretty quick, it's very brief, but it does provide some good information. As we said before, all voting will take place via Australian ballots, March 2nd. And ballots will not be, sorry, ballots will not be mailed this year. If you need absentee ballot, please contact town clerk. We had our third round of COVID testing on January 27th. We had 193 tests, you know, we had 193 staff tests were administered. Out of that, we had zero positive tests. I'm sorry, my, my dog is bothering right now, so I apologize, it's, I'm trying to, so, sorry, I got two things going on here. Just one second.
I'm gonna tell you, that would be karma for Chris, because he picked on me about my dog in a prior meeting.
My dog doesn't bark, it just comes in and just starts nudging, and just knocking the laptop over. So, I had to get my daughter to get my dog outside. I apologize, so. COVID updates, we have 16 positive cases across, last week was not necessarily, actually the past couple weeks, weren't a really good week for us, we anticipated that, so that's, despite that, you know, the state has been seeing its numbers decline, while in Rutland County and Bennington Counties, the cases have been on increasing. So, we anticipated that we would have some positive cases within our communities, and we were, we were right. And I think now, we've had a positive case in each one of our schools in the Quarry Valley. But, the one thing I've been saying is that schools are not spreaders. That while these, the individuals have contracted this outside of the school, and because of the safety measures and the mitigation strategies and protocols we have in place, we have limited the amount of spread within our schools. So I do, I want to continue to thank our building administrators, our staff, and our school nurses for, you know, doing all the great things, and as well as for the students as well, following it, doing everything they need to be doing on a daily basis, so. We are currently in middle of February break. We are providing meals to families that requested it. We will, right now, our plan is to return to in-person learning on Monday, the 22nd. And I say that, as right now, you know, it says it is only Monday, we do have, you know, five or six days left to go. But we anticipate everything, you know, smooth sailing, and return to in-person on Monday, so. What else we have? Lisa Madison and myself have been with each of the Quarry Valley administrators for a mid-year meetings, where we review goals, data, and expectations for the remainder of the year. We're also starting to look at what next year might look like. So, you know, when we have that information, we'll provide that to you. We don't know, and that might not be until, you know, July or August, the way we're going. But as soon as we know what the next year's going to look like, we will, you know, provide you with that. Winter sports have begun, all Quarry Valley schools. Coaches, athletic directors, and building ministers have ensured that all safety, health measures, protocols are in place, and are being closely adhered to. We did have an incident the other night, but, you know, we, because of the strategies, and we were able to kind of limit the amount of close contacts, so we were very fortunate with that. And lastly, legislative updates, I did include a copy of the VSPA Education Legislative Report, kind of covering the first couple weeks of the legislative session, it's just a light reading for you. So, you want to take a look at that, there is a lot in there, but, you know, it's pretty interesting. Kind of see what's come across, you know, the House and the Senate's desk, so, thank you.
Alright, any questions for Chris? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on to principals' report. We'll start with Joe.
Good evening, everybody. You guys have my written report. We are on break, which is good. We did have our first incident over the weekend. So, it's kind of nice that we are on break, and gives everyone a little break. There's just one thing I forgot, because we didn't really do a report last month, and I found it sitting on my desk today, forgot to put it in the report. But, I just wanted to reach out, we had five students that were student in the marking period at Stafford Tech Center for the Term Two. And there was Shelby Olden, Liam Hill, Lucas Van Nostrian, Kylie Consti, and Tyler Lynch. So, you know, just, our kids are up there, and they're doing well up there as well. But, you know, we, feels like we just got back from Christmas break, but it's been a long couple, month and a half going through here. But hopefully the weather breaks, and we can start getting outside again, but we're doing what we're doing well.
Okay, any, any questions for Joe? Hearing none, thank you, Joe.
One more thing too, I'm beginning to become a YouTube expert here. I feel like I gotta pull a kid in next week to ask me how to, with a huddle program for the basketball games. Trying to figure out YouTube, I've never done that before, so I'm learning that as well. I think I'm gonna pull a kid in next week and show me how to do it the right way. I'm learning that as well. I think I'm going to pull a kid in next week and show me how to do it the right way.
Well, they, they look good on everybody's site. So it's a learning curve, but it. It's certainly nice to see everybody, see the kids and, and listen to those balls thumping in the gyms. There's no doubt about that. So. All right, thank you. Kristen?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to piggyback on what Joe said. I pulled a student in to help me with Screencastify. So. You can always learn something new and it was great being taught by a student. There's a lot, a lot of information in my written report. And as you can see from the pictures, there's still a lot of learning going on and. Kids and teachers are finding very creative ways to do things this year. The Valentine Project was a prime example. Instead of making Valentines for kids in their classrooms. They are sending the Valentines to schools all over the country. So it was really neat listening to different facts from different schools in other states. And I think the students have really enjoyed that. I did want to thank my staff. Who has stepped up and covered duties and covered additional classes when we're down. It means a lot and they've gone above and beyond and I really appreciate that. I'd also like to give a shout out to Mr. Harrington's fourth and fifth grade. They are relocated in the library classroom. And it's really interesting to see the learning that's going on and kind of. How it's in its own little hub, even though it's in the center of the school. So they're doing a great job. Last thing, we have seven students who will be returning to in-person learning. So that will. Bring us down to 22 who are remote learners. That's all.
Great. Any questions for Kristen?
Hey, man. Broke something in there.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Kristi.
All right, good evening. Thank you for letting me go. I'm going to jump off soon, watch my daughter play basketball as well. They're playing against Otter Valley tonight. Let's see, so kind of like Kristen, we've done something different for Valentine's Day. We did a collection for the Humane Society. So that was really nice. We had students bring in eye contact and they gave us a list of things that they're need up. We have at least six boxes of things to bring over to the Humane Society this week. Our students have been doing a lot of mid-year assessments. I know it's kind of tough to do this in the middle of a pandemic. However, it's really important that we see which, what learning is happening and the growth that they've made since the fall. Let's see, you can see my written report, third and fourth grade gave some highlights, things that's happening in art class. I've been doing all the mid-years with teachers. We did not require them to do a formal write-up for their mid-years. However, we thought as an admin team, it was really important just to get their perspective. How are things going? What are their goals for the remainder of the year? So we've all been doing that across the SU, meeting with our teachers. Again, working really hard with COVID procedures. I want to thank my custodial staff. They are going above and beyond. Every day and every weekend, making sure our rooms are clean and ready to go. So definitely a big shout out to custodial staff. We were down one between the elementary school and the high school and everybody has really stepped up to help out one another. Any questions?
Don't hear any. Guess you're free to go to the basketball game in the living room. Thank you. Joanne?
Thank you, Lisa. So, yay. You know, the boys' basketball team on Friday night. Sorry, Jay. You know, I was really excited about that because I know one of our students was hoping to reach his goal of 1,000 points. Which that happened. You know, I was really excited about that. We have also joined the other schools that have been able to implement the Huddle livestream platform. And I'm hoping that that is happening tonight. We've had a little bit of fits and starts with that because we ordered it a little bit late, but I'm hoping that's happening tonight. So. Yeah, good for, good for us. Yeah, I would agree with Kristi that our custodial staff has stepped up to the plate because we've had. Somebody that has not been able to, you know, join us over the last few weeks. And I think the schools continue to have high standards related to cleanliness and. Especially as it relates to the sports teams, you know, with practices and things like that. So I'm really excited about that. We have a partnership, a partnership and leadership program. And our, you know, I'm really excited about the fact that our students have really responded positively to up everything and read. You know, the, the staff was concerned that maybe they would have some behavioral issues or new staff that would not be engaged. In the learning, but you know, that has not been the case. We've been talking about different genres of, of books and the, the, the kids have really, really stepped up and, and have responded well to that. I am very excited about the governor's opening up of the music department. And I think when, you know, we think about the performances that we're used to seeing. You know, it's not just going to be athletics now. It's going to be, it's going to be about music. It's going to be about performances and. I look forward to talking to my staff coming back after the vacation to see about ways in which we can. You know, show parents that we continue to have a high level of, you know, the arts that we love to focus on. So. That's all I have tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So we did stream the boys' game tonight. It's not on the huddle, but Mr. Krasman streamed it live on Facebook. So it was. Really the same. You can't tell the difference. But I will say, just before Jay goes that. Yeah, since we, all three of the schools have this, I, I think it does give us great opportunities for music, for art, to. To showcase our other students or some of the same students that are, that are athletes as well. But it, it certainly opens up some great opportunities for us. So thank you, Joanne. And Jay?
Well, good evening, everybody. I, I have a lot of similar information. We did have. As Superintendent Sal mentioned, we had a couple of cases at West Rutland just last week, which was. We knew our time was coming. I want to thank all the staff and our custodians for helping us get through this. There was a lot of behind the scenes. Something that probably hasn't been mentioned is it, it took us about five to five and a half hours to process each case. By the time you do everything, this is an enormous amount of time and it puts everything pretty much on standstill. And our office staff, our nursing, our nurse Sue Brewster and, and Kristen, Lisa Madison's guidance was. Was wonderful, along with the support of the staff and the community. Several things that I wanted to showcase here. We just celebrated our Student of the Quarter awards and we were able to announce our Saludatorian and Vala Victorian. Our Vala Victorian is Mallory McGinnis. And our Saludatorian is Mac Perry. So we congratulate those two. We were able to give awards throughout the middle school and high school and celebrate our students and staff at Tech also. So that was wonderful. I made mention in our, in my report that our MAPS testing mid-year work on Fontis-Vanel also. Has been completed and we saw some really nice gains. Across the board and we're going to spend a little bit more time in our data meetings in early March looking at that. It's been a real emphasis of mine to, to not only collect the data, but how are we using it? And I think, as we all have said, it's been a pretty tough year. But to see the smiling faces of my teachers, I actually had a teacher run in with a, with several pieces of paper in her hand. Two weeks ago and say, you've got to see the amount of growth that my students have made in X grade. And we saw that right across the board. So. Kids are very resilient and I, and, and I was really happy to see that work. Be that hard work pay off. I put a lot of other information in my report, but I do want to highlight. That our new furnace, courtesy of the Quarry Valley Board, is up and running. It was an enormous amount of work. I can't help the vendor enough. We have been up and running now for about a week. It took about two weeks to get this process, you know. Old one removed, new one in, getting them online. As a side note, the new one is much more efficient. We have two furnaces about the size of Volkswagen's in our basement. And the new one is the primary and. It is definitely much more efficient than the old furnace. So we really hope that. It will help our school be a little bit more energy efficient. And we're doing some work to make sure that this one has longevity as it should have. So thank you again to the board for that. It was really nice. And before the cold weather really sits in or sets in. There is so much good going on at West Rutland School. I'm really proud of what we're doing, but. I'll let my report speak for itself. Is there any other questions or any questions I can answer for the board tonight?
Don't hear any questions, but I, I am, it's exciting to hear from our administrators at every meeting about the positives that are happening in our buildings. And, you know, our schools, our schools, as we talked about before, are not spreaders and a great deal of that. Goes to our community, to our students for following and adhering to the guidance. As well as our staff for, you know, our custodial staff is, is doing an amazing, amazing job. So. Big thanks to those. And, and thank you to our, you know, our, our, our teachers and support staff for stepping up as Kristen said and. You know, helping out. These are unique times and, and we're. We're pleased to see that everyone is just, is helping and putting the, putting the time and effort in. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on to personnel. I, I don't have any contracts in my packet. Chris, did you have anything?
We just have the support staff and extracurricular. So it's just, it's two custodians on an hourly, Tyler Pope and Jacob Debonis at Polton High School. At $12 an hour. And then for extracurricular, we have Amanda Posh. It looks like a couple of just Robinix. For Polton High School Homework Club, $15 an hour, Joanna Trout. Virtual High School Instructor, $30 an hour, Carol Ryan. Looks like Proctor High School, 5th grade boys' basketball coach, $546. Megan Doherty and Lauren Loizel at Mentor Stipend at $750 each.
Okay.
And if I can just add those two, the after-school program, Homework Club, that's paid through, through a grant as well, through the VSAC year-up grant. So we have to pay them and then we get reimbursed at the end of the year from VSAC.
I'll make a motion. Joe, how did, how is that working this year for Homework Club?
We didn't do it the first half of the year, so we have our cafeteria set up as a classroom. So they're there for an hour after school if kids need the help. And it just gives the kid a place to go. So.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so a motion would be in order for the two support staff and the one, two, three, four, five, six. Extracurricular as read by Chris.
Motion.
Motion by Jim, second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. For resignation, we do not have resignation of staff, but we have the resignation of two board members, Gail Curtis from the Proctor. Board contingency, I guess, and Sarah Getcha from the West Rutland. So both of those are on the ballots for the remainder of their terms to be voted on. On town meeting. So a motion would be in order to accept the, their resignations from the board with regret.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Nate, second?
Seth will say it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. I'm guessing since Louis is in here, we can skip over the budget presentation?
I think that was just if anyone had any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions about the budget presentation? Louis always does an amazing job for us at the annual meeting. There's no doubt about that. All right, so the annual meeting, informational meeting will be February 23rd and everyone should receive. That sign-in information tomorrow night. You should received the meeting information for the carousel meeting.
Lisa, this is Kristen. Can you just give me a quick, what, what is that about again? Sorry.
The carousel meeting?
Yeah, tomorrow.
For the ratification of the master contract.
Okay, so it's the ratification part, okay.
Yes. Okay, are there any future agenda items you'd like to see on the March agenda? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to policies. The policy committee has been working and reading through and going through policies. There are three policies before you for approval. Are there any questions about any of the policies that were presented? Kristen Whitman's a member of the policy committee, so maybe she or Chris Sal could address that.
Yeah, I just have, yeah, I just have one, one little nitpicky question. Just reading on the. It was the one about the, yeah, electronic communications between employees and students. There was a point in there saying. But I think it's between 10:00 PM and 11:00 PM, there shouldn't be correspondence. If an email response that has no other problems with it, other than it happened at something like midnight. Whether it originates from student or from employee is, is that going to be a problem? I'm apologizing if I missed a nuance, that the nuance is covered, so it's not going to be there. I just don't want us to.
So that, that was a pretty lengthy conversation in committee. And, you know, the difficulty, I, I guess I would say, then I'll, Kristen Whitman or Chris Sal can. But we're dealing with pre-K to high school. And so we're trying to mesh these policies together to kind of encompass a lot. And, you know, we had, we had a lot of conversations that focused more kind of on the high school. Student-teacher relationship, I think. And. There were a lot of different times put out there, a lot of conversations back and forth. And that was kind of. Just the general consensus that, you know, there's a time where. You know, it probably, communication doesn't need to be taking place. Teachers need to have their space and students as well. And. So those were kind of the times, but all out, Kristen Whitman or Chris, if you have something else?
I mean, I, I guess what I would say Seth is, yeah, that was definitely an area where we spoke at length. I had some concern about that. I think, I guess my worry was that just it would get in the way of teachers. Doing what they needed to do when they could do it. But I definitely understand what Lisa's saying too about setting boundaries and that we need to do that for. Students who are in adolescent age. I, I guess I honestly worry about like some sort of grievance. You know, or just feeling like you can't do what, you know, the teachers might feel like that's inhibiting their ability to. To do their job. So I think it is an area of concern, but we wanted to bring it to you all.
Yeah, and then I guess I wonder, was there any conversation? I, I think Greg left. He was on the meeting for a little while. But I wonder if there's even some tech controls that could be put in place. For example, can there be limitations on the emails? In certain regards, so they don't, they literally don't send between the hours of 10:00 and 6:00 PM with some certain rules around them, right? I'm just trying to cover all that, right? Like the fact that in today's society, and I think parents, like me as a parent, if my child. If it was midnight on Friday night and my child had a concern that came up and the result of that was, you know, I think we should probably email your teacher. You know, if we're, if we're awake and, and co- Um, you know, if we're, if we're awake and, and co, you know, able to do that, I, I wouldn't think anything about sending that email at that time while it's fresh in the mind. Never having any expectation for a teacher or anything like that to respond at an unreasonable time too, right? But it's sort of, we are in an instant gratification sort of society these days. And I think that if somebody has a thought about something that legitimately needs to have some correspondence to, um, the reality is that sometimes midnight, um, thoughts pop into our head and an email might be sent. I think that could be possible from, uh, employees and students as well. Um.
Seth, that's a good point. I wonder if there's something like, you know, it wouldn't inhibit somebody from sending it, but it might not get receipt, like you could do it when it, you needed to do it. But then it wouldn't get sent. There'd be some, yeah.
Yeah. Just, just thinking out loud.
Yeah. I mean, there, there are a million different hypotheticals and it's very difficult to, when you're establishing policy. So you want to have a blanket, you know, statement. And we did talk about this at length, you know, and, uh, you know, there's nothing magical about the 10:00 PM because, you know, 9:59 and 10:00 PM or 10:01, you're splitting hairs. But I, I think what it was down to is more the context of the communication as well. You know, so, you know, so I think it's one where it's good practice that, you know, we were asking people just to limit communication with their, you know, students at a certain time. This is, you know, it's not appropriate, you know, but obviously if it's an emergency situation, then you know, we vet it out and, you know, kind of work through that way. But I, I, I just, having been, done this in many different districts and, you know, in many different places where, uh, you know, obviously there's a difference between a Tuesday night, you know, when a test coming up, you know, so 10:30, I have a quick question about a test or a project, as opposed to a Friday or Saturday night where, you know, you know, hey, how's your weekend going? There's, there's, you know, big difference between those types of communication that are, you know, uh, between a student and a staff member. And I think that's where we really have to just encourage, you know, like you said, between the hours of 10:00 and 6:00, you know, it just, we really shouldn't be communicating with anyone. And I do know that from a teacher's perspective too, they also want to look at like, you know, you know, they want to shut down too. There's a certain time where they're not uh, at the beck and call of a student or a parent. So it's like at nine thirty at night, that they're, or 10:30 at night, they're not expecting to have to return an email or respond to an email. Like, you know, they have a life as well. So there is that balance with that.
Yeah. That's, that's no problem. I appreciate definitely, clearly you guys spent a lot of time thinking about it and, and, and covered all this. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a situation where, you know, somebody might get punished for what would actually be considered probably good communication, just because it happened at, you know, outside of these hours with no other problems. So I think, uh, you guys did a great job of explaining it. So I'm okay.
Um, this is Kristen. The other thing is it says between employee and student, which I assume is just that. Whereas if a parent has a concern, even on behalf of a student, a parent could send an email with no expectation. The, the instructor or teacher or staff member would get back to them right away. But at least that's not, it doesn't say employee, student slash parent. It just says employee and student. So I'm, I'm assuming parents, if communication needed to be had. And the other thing I'll point out, which will, you know, age me, but probably most of us is I never once pre-K through 12 ever emailed a teacher and got through it just fine. There was no email. So you can usually wait. So just putting that out there.
You know, like Kristen, those are good points. I think this is in place for, uh, you know, it's not really like said for homework help. I, as a student, I, you know, I, I got through just fine. Well, relatively fine. Um, but I think it's one where we're really looking at the situations where, um, the lines are blurred, where it's just, you know, not necessarily an email, but like on Instagram or, um, Snapchat or something else where we really shouldn't be communicating with, you know, employees and students should not be communicating with one another in a, in an informal manner. And I think that's where you're, it's more of a blanket statement here. And it is between employee and student, because if a parent wishes to reach out with a question, uh, there is no expectation that at 10:30 at night that a teacher will have to respond. They can get to it the next day. But, uh, it, it really is just trying to just establish, you know, professional relationships on, on both, both sides that students and staff understand. Just, and, and we do, I say 99.9% of our students and our staff understand this. So it's more just a blanket protection. Like, hey, this is just good practice, just something to think about as you, you know, you move throughout your day.
Are there any other questions, comments or concerns about the three policies? A motion would be in order to approve the three policies?
I make a motion.
Motion by Jim, second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Nate. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Lisa, this is the first read for these three. So this, this will come back around the next four being as well for these.
Oh, so we don't need a motion this evening?
Right. Right. These are just the first read. Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. I, I think we look at these so many times. I think we're ready to approve them. My apologies. Okay. Um, is there anything else anyone has to come before the board? If not, um, we do need just, uh, a few moments of your time in executive session to discuss, um, negotiations.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, could we have a motion at 6:59 to go into executive session for negotiations?
That's what I said.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Nate. And we can excuse, um, all administration. Thank you all very much. Enjoy the remainder of your holiday.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.